Good evening. It is Thursday, September 2nd, 2021. I see a quorum here of the board so we can move into our committee of the whole board meeting for kindergarten programming. We can start with our secretary noting the role here and going to the Pledge of Allegiance. So if we stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America as a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And today we'll start with community input. I do not have a blue sheet in front of me, but if there's anybody in the audience that would like to speak, now's the time to do so.
I do have some comments submitted electronically, one, two, three, four, five, six of them for the committee of the whole meeting. The first one is from Maria Zeller-Brower, who says, "I strongly support the option of full-day kindergarten in District 25. I am the parent of a District 25 student and would have loved the opportunity to send my child to full-day kindergarten in the district, even if that meant that I paid a fee. Research has found that children who attended for a full day had better academic outcomes the following year, more self-confidence, and were better at playing with others. While I understand that full-day kindergarten is not best for all families, I strongly believe that families should have the option in District 25. Thank you for considering this option." And from Ryan Uden, "Please start a plan to implement all-day kindergarten in District 25. If we are committed to an inclusive community and school district, we must find a way to provide full-day kindergarten. Many families chose not to move to Arlington Heights because of the lack of all-day kindergarten, and many families don't have the resources to provide additional daycare resources or pay for private school tuition. Full-day kindergarten would be more equitable for all." And from Stacy Pacilio, "I am a huge believer in half-day kindergarten at 5 years old and feel it offers a very balanced day for the age. I also support adding full-day kindergarten for families that need it. You would get a good, you will get a good amount more families enrolled at the kindergarten level if you add full day because they use the Catholic schools for full day already and then transfer. It is a valuable addition as long as it remains an addition and half-day option remains." From Dio Delfino, "Any chance kindergarten hours could be the same hours as the grade schools?" From Lori Martin, "As the administration and board consider this issue, I ask that they strongly weigh what educational benefits, if any, full-day kindergarten would provide compared to the already robust half-day program and weigh that against the financial cost, building, personnel, et cetera, of offering a full-day program? And is it possible to partner with the Park District to provide more of a full-day program for those parents who may need it for work reasons or other reasons, including transporting students from the school to a Park District site? Thank you." And from Nathan Olery, "Thank you for reversing your, this comment was on both for this meeting and next meeting. I'm not which one sure which one it was meant for, so I'm going to read it. Thank you for reversing your decision on optional masking and complying with the governor's mandate. To the extent that you consider optional masking again, we expect that you explicitly inform the public in advance and take into account the community's concerns. We also expect that you continue to follow the spirit of the relevant Health and Education Board guidance going forward. While wearing masks in school is an inconvenience, it is a critical component of the mitigation strategies being used in school. The goal is to keep our children in the classroom safely, as we can see by other school districts with optional masking across the nation, who have had significant quarantines or have altogether shut down. Masking is an important mitigation tool to ensure safety of our children, teachers, and staff, as well as ensure continuity of our children's education." And that's all the public comments submitted for the committee of the whole meeting.
All right. Thank you. So moving on, we're going to get another crux to this committee of the whole with the superintendent report, and this is the subject of full-day kindergarten programming. So Dr. Bynne, I think we got it up on the screen there and ready to go.
Thank you. Thank you for the board coming together with extra time tonight to have this conference conversation. The district administration has a lot of details gathered, but what we're really looking for tonight of the board's high-level thoughts and ideas on the direction we like us to focus. At this point, the information that we have gathered, some that we're sharing with you tonight and some that we have for future needs. The information we've gathered so far has not cost us any outside fees. Moving forward, however, we recognize we may need to consult with an architect or with a public finance professional, and we want to make sure that we focus our efforts and our resources appropriately with the board's interests in mind. Implementing full-day kindergarten is something that the cabinet-level team is very excited about exploring. As some of the board members know, I have past experience in building a full-day kindergarten program, and it's one of the things I'm most proud of because of the sustainability and the impact of that program in that district. It is not a small nor simple project, however, if we're going to do it at the level we believe is necessary and representative of the educational experience our staff and community expects and our District 25 students deserve. As we share some information with you this evening, I'd like to thank the entire cabinet-level team for their work on this, and especially Ryan Schultz, who took the initiative to create the format for our conversation tonight. I apologize, I will look at the screen and in front of me depending on how tired my eyes are tonight. To explore full-day kindergarten, thank you, I have it here, thank you. To explain, or to explore full-day kindergarten is an important service to our community. I want to review some of the work that we shared in 2017, when we did extensive research at that time, almost exactly four years ago to this month. It was actually August that we brought all of that research to the board in 2017. First, a reminder that we do have full-day kindergarten for some of our at-risk populations, and we have for years. We have a bilingual English-language extended day for students that qualify in that area, and we have an early childhood kindergarten full day for students with significant IEP needs in that program. Some of the research that we shared in 2017 was when we surveyed our families. 60% of those who responded as District 25 families wanted full-day kindergarten if the following four things could be in place: that it could be sustainable, that it could be held at their home schools, that all kindergarten students could attend whether they could afford a cost or not, and that there be no tax increase to our residents to run it. So again, that was the information we had then. We will talk about should we survey again now. And the research in general of the impact academically for kids who go to full-day kindergarten is very much the same now as it was in 2017. Students that attend full-day kindergarten do show academic growth during that year compared to their half-day kindergarten peers. However, at first grade, you begin to see a leveling off of that difference, and by third grade, no academic achievement difference exists between students who attended full-day kindergarten and students who attended half-day. There's no achievement gap once you get to third grade. That doesn't mean that full-day kindergarten doesn't have an incredible impact on kids in many ways, but it's just important to recognize the sustainability of an academic impact at that level. So again, tonight, we're really hoping to get some information from the board after some conversation and after we share some, you know, ground-level information with you so that we know what to research further, what steps you may want to not have us put our time and effort into. So we'll share some information with you about what a kindergarten day or curriculum might look like, what it might mean for staffing and personnel if basically you're doubling a program, what our facilities' needs might be, as well as what some of the ongoing yearly operational costs or things might be that we have to consider. Ryan put this graphic together that I really like that just currently shows where all of our district facilities exist, right? The basic here is that half of our buildings are kind of in the north area of Arlington Heights within our district boundaries, and the other half are kind of in the south. Just showing that we have a fairly equal split on schools in the north end and schools towards the south end. With, you'll see on that chart, as we all kind of know, minor school being one of the more central location facilities that we own. While we don't run a District 25 school there, it is a building that the district owns. Whoops. Current half-day, did I skip one? Thank you. This would be projections for, I can't even tell what year it goes through, projections for, can you see it? A year into the future.
Somebody got some cheaters I can play?
Sorry. These are projections for kindergarten enrollment in blue, and that's half-day kindergarten. So these are enrollment projections based on the CASADA projections that we usually have done every couple of years. We'll be asking them to redo it in the winter this year.
2029.
Thank you. These projections go through 2029 when you zoom in on your computer. But we're showing you basically the half-day kindergarten projections in blue, but also what's important to consider are the full-day first-grade projections in red. Because we can make a general assumption that should kindergarten go to a full-day program, many of those students who don't come here till first grade will likely enroll as kindergartners if it is a full-day program. And so in many of our slides moving forward, I'll share with you, we are using the first-grade projections as if that's what we could expect in terms of the number of enrollment of kindergartners if we went to full day. Some current half-day kindergarten information. We have laid out by school what our current enrollment is for kindergartners. Currently, across the district this year, we have 469 kindergartners using 25 half-day sections. We're currently using 14 classroom spaces across the district for kindergarten with 12 and 1/2 staff members, 12 and 1/2 full-time equivalent staff members to teach those sections. Using that first-grade full-day information from this year, if we were to do that this year, we would have 560 kindergartners instead of 469, about 100 more. And if you look historically, it's somewhere close to just over 100 additional students that we add in first grade in District 25 from the kindergarten year before. We would have had 28 sections using 14 classroom spaces, which is also how many we're using right now. But we, let's see, existing, oh, existing classroom spaces are the 14. We would need nine additional if we're using that first-grade number, and we'd be short about five classrooms throughout the district when you look at what extra spaces we currently could use throughout the district. But we think more appropriate is to use the first-grade projections from our enrollment study that we do every couple of years. And in that study, it would show what the projections are for kindergarten are actually 625 students. We know that the impact of the pandemic in the last couple of years has lost us some students, most significantly at Ivy Hill School, where they are down about 100 students from a typical school year. So if we were to use the projections that for the past, I think we show this at some point in our presentation, over the past many years, the CASADA projections have been almost exactly on target since we first did them about six years ago. So if that was to hold true, this year, we would have expected 625 students making up 33 sections and needing an additional 10 classes that we would be short based on what our typical classroom utilization is. So that's 10 classes across the district that should we have our typical projected enrollment. We would have to figure out where that would occur to host what we believe would be the expected enrollment for kindergarten. A real quick glance on what's the difference, the possible difference in a student's schedule if they're in half-day or full-day. This is really just one rendition of what a schedule could look like. If we were going to move to full day, we of course would want our teachers to give significant input into how they feel the day should best be structured for our kindergarten learners. But in general, for our half-day program, our students experience literacy for 250 minutes per week, and we could see that growing significantly to 510 minutes per week should we go to a full-day program. So significant more time in the area of literacy. The same significant jump in math, in fact, we could see about twice as much instead of 150 minutes per week, moving to 300 minutes per week in some sort of math experience. But of course, we'd also importantly have to grow our time in specials. All of our schools have a strategic academic time. That might be where we have some interventions or some acceleration. Recession would significantly grow. If our students were here, instead of 75 minutes per week, it would grow to what's a more typical for our other grades, 300 minutes per week. We have some flex time, of course, when kids arrive, and we do our morning meetings with our class, we review calendars, we review different, we have different station exploration. That would grow. And we don't see a big change in the arrival dismissal, right? We basically take five minutes at the beginning of the day, five minutes at the end to prepare kids coming in and coming out. We double, likely double our social-emotional learning time, and here's the real big difference. Currently at kindergarten, we do not schedule time for science or social studies instruction. We do integrate science or social studies themes through math or through literacy, but if we had a full day, we believe we'd be able to add a specific social studies-science time. And then lunch, right? Currently, zero minutes per week are used for lunch for our kindergartners. We would need to add in that lunch for 150 minutes per week. I'm going to let Dr. Les Wicky talk through just some of the aspects from a student services lens.
So for our English language resource minutes, that may increase from 75 to, students right now, 75 to about 150 minutes a week, would most likely increase to 150 minutes per week for English language resource. In terms of special education, right now, currently, we already have full-day kindergarten for our instructional programs at Windsor. Our integrated services program at Westgate is a half-day program, so we would have to increase by one teacher to offer full day, so we could have two sections. In terms of resource at the kindergarten level, I took a look at the students that we have currently in kindergarten and minutes per week of special education that they receive with our first graders, and the numbers are very similar and that we can attribute to because in kindergarten, it's a very, it's a process in terms of identification for students to receive special education with our response to intervention. And across the district, in our resource programming, we only have 15 students that receive special education through a resource program in kindergarten, and in first grade, it's about 17. So we're not going to see a significant impact at all in terms of special education. The greatest impact we would have with full-day kindergarten for special ed is the ability for our related service staff to have more flexibility in terms of scheduling related service because the students would be there all day. So in terms of adding more staff for special education, we may need to for related services, but that would be because of the increase in numbers of students overall in enrollment.
So from a cost-per-sets perspective, we really would not see a dramatic increase in the area of special services because we don't see those students going from half-day to full-day as first graders, getting double the amount of time of services that they need. It's still determined individually what their time is, and that's pretty similar in our experience. It would be the instructional program that's currently half-day that would need to expand to full day. Just a quick glimpse, Stacy, if you wouldn't mind talking through just a quick list of some of the operational costs we would need to think about on an annual basis.
So we know with the chart that showed the number of teachers, we would need a total of approximately 21 and 1/2 FTE or additional for 55,000, that's just under 1.2 million, depending on the additional minutes for specials and how many teachers that equates to because it's, it's not as simple math as taking the number of minutes and dividing because it's art, it's music, it's PE, it's LMC, and it's split across seven buildings, so it could be different sections at each building. It could be travel time if it's a part-time staff member that is attending to multiple buildings, so there would be costs associated with that. Additional materials and supplies, assuming that kindergarten is a grade level of students that use a significant number of supplies and paper in the classroom, we anticipate the additional costs there. Furniture to equip the additional classroom spaces. Classroom technology, if we remain one-to-one with the iPads, as well as the support of the additional classroom spaces and all the technology that goes into them. Related services staff, as PEG mentioned, could be minimal. The question marks would be the EL staff and then any of the kindergartners that we may not currently be servicing that could come into our buildings that might need speech and language, et cetera, type of things. Right now, kids who attend the parochial schools get speech and language, speech and language services to the extent that we have federal grant money that requires us to provide proportionate share. Once that dollar amount runs out, then we don't provide additional services. If those kids were in our buildings and had set, IEPs with set minutes per week, that could increase those services in the district. Certainly, we'd need to address having kindergartners who aren't currently here for lunch, having access to both lunch space as well as supervision and additional lunch staff to support them. And then it's likely we would need some FTE and additional custodial staff, not necessarily a person at each building, but could be a .2 or .3 in various buildings to help address the additional cleaning of the additional classroom spaces.
Thank you. We're going to move on to a facilities perspective. Ryan has put together kind of three or four main options for you, but know that every option has lots of variables. We even, we're going to set forward, you know, kind of the spaces that people, we've reviewed in the past, but there also can always be a phase in. There can be a combination of each of these three categories. So just know we're trying to give you kind of the basic, big picture, but we can always look at combining or doing parts of each one as we, as well. Ryan, I'm going to hand you this clicker.
So the, the general theme here becomes that there's three buckets that any of these options can kind of fall into. The first is a neighborhood-school-based scenario where the kindergarten student would attend their neighborhood school that they would be assigned when they are currently in kindergarten or first grade. So there's two options for that area. There's also always the option of a brand-new kindergarten center that some of the neighboring districts have implemented, where all the kindergarten students from the district would funnel to that school for kindergarten. Again, that would require some staffing and resources, again, for that building to be administered. And then also the final option that we have in Arlington tonight, so it's a little unique, is that we have some extra buildings that are still within the district's real estate portfolio that could be repurposed and used for the kindergarten program. So I'll touch base a little bit on all of them. Just a summary of the main highlight topics that, again, we're touching, and again, any of these could be hybrid. There's various roll-in phases, like Dr. Bynne said. One A, the premise of the one A scenario is that we would add enough kindergarten rooms to kind of maintain the existing enrollment capacity of a building. So we would look at how many rooms we're using for kindergarten now, and then we would add enough additional kindergarten rooms to make up those sections. So if, again, if a building had one open room right now, that building may maintain one open room with this model just because we would want to keep some capacity ability for that building. Option one B is looking a little bit more granular, looking at the schools and seeing how many rooms are open, filling those rooms, those open rooms with kindergarten classrooms, and then seeing what's left, how many classrooms would still be, need to be built for the district based on filling those rooms. The drawback, the major drawback to this model is we'd be almost probably at 100% capacity in almost all the elementary school buildings. It wouldn't allow much program flexibility, and it wouldn't allow much enrollment flexibility for the district going forward if we have an enrollment bump in a different grade level or the kindergarten starts getting more than we even expected. So that's the drawback of one B. Again, the next option would be to consider a consolidated kindergarten center. Again, we're lucky enough right now that we believe there are some options on sites that we could look at on our own properties that we wouldn't have to be going out to the market looking for properties and things like that in Arlington tonight. So I'll show you some options with that. And then the following, the last area kind of focuses on our existing real estate. Again, a possibility of using Dunton as the kindergarten center, but this building would most likely need an addition, in addition to using the main existing building. We would need an addition here to supplement that. Consolidated kindergarten at Minor, consolidated kindergarten at Rand. And then another one we, I did not cost out or anything, it's just something we've put out there, is the potential of adding possibly onto two buildings in the north and two buildings in the south, and kind of doing a hybrid approach to getting kids to that building. Again, no cost or anything else behind there. We just thought of some of that behind the scenes and just want to put it out there. If there's more discussion on that, we'd obviously be able to look at it. Open real estate in Arlington Heights, that is one that we've looked at with the village planning department. Right now, there currently is not a lot of space in the size of, for one building. If we were looking to do it as like a supplemental building, we probably could look at that if we're trying to supplement something. But right now, there probably wouldn't be enough in more towards central Arlington Heights that where we'd want it to be to allow for a kindergarten center to be housed in a Arlington Heights property. So again, we would always be open to looking at that if that's the direction you want us to review more, we could obviously look into that in more depth. So option one A, again, is building additions onto all the elementary schools. This would allow us to maintain a similar capacity percentage that we have now. So again, if there's an open classroom, we might have an open classroom that the building can use for some of the programs that they already have in the building. That gives them a little bit of space and it will give them a little flexibility for enrollment bumps. Again, we're basing this on the CASADA numbers for 2022, 23, with a potential kindergarten enrollment of 625 students. Again, the potential number of sections would be 33, and the existing classrooms, K classrooms that we have are 14, so the difference on that is 19. So that's how we get to the 19 classrooms that would be needed for this one A model. I do have some other things on there. Again, we talked about the additional staffing to support it. I do have some costs in my model for furniture, but again, there would be additional utility costs, again, a small amount in the overall grand scheme of things, but again, each building would have some additional utility costs and things like that that would be a recurring cost. So taking that into account, again, this is a really rough order to, order of magnitude pricing model. pricing model. Again, just looking at square footage of the space we would need for classrooms, the, it's not just directly the classrooms, there's a little bit of space maybe for a couple of offices and hallways and things like storage, stuff like that, but it really is not looking at the existing building in depth right now, right? So once we would start going down a path, we'd look at what the existing building may need to support that, but right now, we're looking at it as this is the addition, right? So some buildings may be a little bit more, some buildings may be a little less, but I think this is a good starting point to look at rough order of magnitude costing. So again, if we look at all the classrooms that we need to add across the district, including our fees, some contingency and an allowance for furniture because we'd need new furniture probably for these additional classrooms to support it, we're looking probably in the 26 to 33 million dollar range for, again, adding on to all seven buildings in the district. The next model again is one B, a little bit less intense with the number of classrooms that are needed. This again is using a 625 enrollment, the same amount of sections are needed, the same amount of existing classrooms are needed, but then we would try to fill in any open classrooms that we have at our buildings with kindergarten classes and then just add on the additional rooms to the buildings that would be needed for, to support the kindergarten program. So we'd be around 10 classrooms for that to support the kindergarten program. Again, near 100% capacity at the elementary schools, but it would allow for us to be in the overall 14.2 to 17.5 million dollar range depending on how it shakes out. And again, we have to do a lot more detailed scoping and drawings and things like that to get a little bit more detail on where these numbers go, but I just want to put some rough order of magnitude pricing out there for these two, one A and one B. Are there any questions on this for right now? The next is again, building a brand-new kindergarten center somewhere in Arlington Heights that we would try to support the kindergarten program for the whole district. Looking at it from a perspective of, the first model is 25 classrooms plus a three-classroom buffer. That's with our current enrollment, right? So that's our current half-day enrollment. So I'm trying to bookend it on saying, oh, if only the half-day kids come back, that's why we'd be at the 25 plus three type of building. And then going to the other extreme, the 33 plus three, 33 base classrooms, three classrooms buffer would be for, if we were at the 625 student enrollment. So the model I put together, again, made some assumptions based on square footages, the amount of space we'd need for other areas in the building. The building does get quite sizable, right? This is pretty much an elementary school for the district, a 71,000 to 85,000 square-foot building is, is kind of our bread and butter for an elementary-sized school building. So we'd be probably in the range of 30.9 million to 37 million dollars. Again, just, we'd have to do a lot of different things to finalize that number, but a rough costing of what a new building just to support kindergarten would be. Again, with that would be the necessary additional support staff and things like that if we would go build a new building. A little bit of, we were kind of looking at some spots where this building could possibly go on our property, so again, we wouldn't have to be going out to the market, trying to find property. South Middle School would be an option. It has a general flat area that's, seems to be well-maintained for a building to go up. It is close to Wayside School, so there, it's kind of a nice little flow there. It's not really in the neighborhood. It kind of makes a little campus with the neighboring schools. The next would be Dunton here. The drawback to Dunton would be Arlington Heights Road, and then if we would maintain this at the administration building, we have in-service days and things like that with traffic so that we'd have the merging of traffic. And then again, it's all the way on the far south end of town. Minor would also be another option. The property there though is heavily used for sporting events, baseball, soccer, things like that. And then we also would be bookended by two schools that are operating as well. So we have NSSEO heavily uses Minor and then we have Windsor School on the east side of the property. So again, just some general areas that we could look at for a building if it was going down that path. And then the final major area is options three A, B, and C, that's consolidated kindergarten at an existing District 25 facility. So the three options for this would be, again, using Dunton as the main building. The main problem with Dunton is we currently have administration staff here, so we'd have to offset with that somewhere else. We don't, I don't have any cost put together for where that would go or how that would look, but obviously, it would have to go somewhere else. The building is built in 1960s, the classrooms are not all kindergarten-sized. The classrooms that are smaller here, they're about 850 square feet, where typical kindergarten classrooms, 1,250 because they have play centers and different structures in the rooms. So the rooms are smaller and probably not up to a kindergarten-sized classroom standard. So that would be some of the items that would need to be looked at. Again, we have limited restrooms here. Kindergartens typically have either a dedicated restroom for the classroom or shared restroom or just more in general. And just overall upgrades, the whole building would need to have upgrades for electrical, HVAC would need to be upgraded, the fire alarm system would need to be upgraded. The building currently is not sprinkled, so it doesn't have a fire suppression system. We most likely would put one in for that as well because the rest of our buildings have it. Minor, the major drawback to Minor is that it's a two-story facility, mostly kindergarten centers are one, so the younger kids are not traversing up and downstairs or using elevators throughout the day. A big problem with that is the the two-story element of it. It would probably be big enough to be very close to fitting the entire program, but again, the two-story element of it is a little bit of a nuance that would apply to a kindergarten center. Again, a 1960-style building that would need major upgrades to all the HVAC, mechanical, electrical systems as well to get it up to our standard. Windows, masonry exterior would need to be looked at as well. So a whole litany of items that would need to be reviewed at Minor to make that into a kindergarten center. And then finally, Rand. Rand is on the far north end of town. It is mostly on the first floor, but the design of that facility is more in pods. If you're familiar with the building, there's several pods of classrooms around the north end of the building. So it was built, I believe, 1960s as well. Different setup for that time, kind of not a modern layout for any kind of school these days. And again, need extensive upgrades to everything, HVAC, electrical, plumbing, finishes, masonry exterior. The roof section on the north end of the building would need to be reviewed as well. Again, a big undertaking for renovations at that facility to make it usable for, to our standards.
So just a quick observation-type question. In all three of these scenarios, sorry, Mr. President, we are displacing existing tenants.
Yeah, I was going to get to that.
So your rough estimate costs do not take any of that into consideration.
Right, do not, not taking any of that.
Obviously, in two of the three cases, we're just foregoing rent and we'd be passing that burden out to somebody else.
Correct, yeah, we would lose that revenue.
Well, so I just wanted to kind of bring that up before we.
So Minor again has two tenants. NSSEO is the major tenant, takes up 90% of the, probably even a little bit more than that, 90% of the building. And then a mother's touch is the daycare on the first floor that takes up the remaining portion of it. We also have our facility shop on the other side, it wouldn't impact that at all, but that is also over the facility. And then Food and Kai Japanese Schools at Rand, they've been a partner with us for decades now at this point. They would have to find a spot, and that's the other part with Minor. NSSEO, we, our students go in there as well as supporting other surrounding districts. So Minor is heavily used for multitude of neighboring districts.
Yeah, thanks.
Kind of getting to that with these next slides, I'm not going to go through these. These are just kind of the items that I just summarized. Again, with Dunton, not enough classrooms right now. We'd need an addition and the major hindrance here is where would the administration and support staff go to? That's, that's the Dunton setup. Sorry. I thought it was advancing both. Kindergarten at Minor, again, we just talked about this, but our two tenants, one is there until 2027 in the current lease with an 18-month termination notice, and then the other is there, a mother's touch, until 2028 with a 12-month termination. Same kind of setup with the amount of items that would need to be upgraded. Again, a separate administration staff and support staff would have to be set up for that facility to make it run on a daily basis. And then again, recurring costs for O and M maintenance utilities and that would become fully ours then because we're not getting it offset by the lease, so that would become all ours as well. And then again, Rand, same kind of setup. Food and Kai, their lease goes until 2028 with a 24-month termination. Again, same thing with finishes, systems currently, they don't have centralized air conditioning, they have window units, so like all that stuff is going to be new. I mean, it needs to be in, in essence, to be up to one of our school standards. So just in summary, just so you can see it all on one slide, kind of the cost of each, again, a real high level at this point, just to kind of get us in the right area, ballpark. Option one A is probably a range of 26 to 33 million, again, additions at all schools. Option one B, approximately 14 to 17 with the big asterisks that we would be at 100% capacity, most likely at all of our school, elementary schools. Building a new kindergarten center, 30 to 37. And then all the other options in option three A through C in the mid-20 million dollar range. Three D, again, I have not costed or we haven't really discussed that in detail on how that would work, the hybrid model. I guess that may come into play more if it was an options-based kindergarten where we would look at that a little bit more too, but just want to put that out there. And then open Arlington Heights real estate, we probably need a little bit more direction on where to explore that further. Real rough, again, high, high-level construction timeline, just kind of some of the stuff we know from past projects on village approval, but the big thing right now obviously is board direction on where we'd go with the board, starting to get the programming of each building or how it looks, if any, goes forward. Getting the village approval process, we've seen varying degrees of timelines for that on how long the village approval takes. One of our major things that the village likes to see is traffic, so we'd need to get traffic studies, engineering studies, things like that put together. And then construction, again, this is just looking at, I think it'll cover all of our models. At this point, I do not see it obviously feasible for the 2022 school year. Depending on the scenario, the 2023 school year may come into play, but most likely the 2024 school year, where we're at right now is where we'd be ready to implement it fully, like right with the building side. Not saying that we can't do interim things like modular classrooms or look at other space in the interim, but just to be realistic that, to be 100% ready with the facility side, it would most likely be the 2024 school year. So with that, I will turn it over to Dr. Vine for any closing.
I'll just state again, thank you, Ryan, so much, that we're excited about this conversation, right? We're trying to give the board all the different things to just have in the back of your head, but I don't want you to mistake that as us trying to say, oh, this is negative or that's negative. We would love full-day kindergarten as a service to our community. And anytime that we can get our kids in front of our teachers more is a good thing. But we want to make sure is that we understand from the board, you know, what, what are the main solutions and things that you're, that you're wanting? When we provided this information in 2017, at that point, we determined not to move forward. And so I'm really open to your questions and your conversations about, do you think now is the time to move forward and in, in what way? So some of the things I'm hoping, you know, following some discussion today, that I'm hoping that we can understand from the board, what are your thoughts on doing a community survey again? We did the one in 2016, 17. At that point, we surveyed our parents. We did not survey taxpayers, right? If this is something that we're going to do with a cost, it might be useful to either survey our taxpayers or put on a future ballot a question, a non-binding question there, right? Should we, would you support XYZ amount to your taxes to build or implement full-day kindergarten? So I'll be interested in your thoughts on that. Also, if you have preferences on a format, is it additions at each of the home schools? Is it a kindergarten center that you have an interest in or some combination? Thoughts that the board might have on, on a cost or how we cover a cost? Do you want us to explore a tax rate increase? A combination of, we've used our debt service extension in the past for building onto our schools? Do you want us to consider, we talked about in 2017, tuition for the second half of a kindergarten where people, families would get their half-day kindergarten at no extra cost, but that they would pay a tuition for the second half? And are there other instructional goals or other goals that the board has in mind that you'd like us to make sure we consider as we determine what next steps to take? So with that, I'm interested in thoughts, questions, conversation.
Dr. Vine, thank you for everyone that contributed to that presentation. It's clear that was a lot of work and I'll speak for myself, but I'm sure my colleagues agree, appreciate all that you put into it. You opened up your presentation today, and I, I have to admit, I didn't know this, that you had opened or started a full-day kindergarten program previously. So, but you spoke that, you know, you had great pride in that and you, either taking the comments and your comments in that direction or you also shared the excitement of bringing this. So I think it's really important we start with the why. And we, we had upfront, and it was research, I think many of us are familiar with, that the academic, at least the research shows us that it doesn't stick. But so many times when we sit at this table, we talk about test scores, right? So rather than sort of in my opinion, I would like first to hear from you or anyone else at the table, why should we talk about this? And our community will have a say too, but I'm asking you.
Again, from my perspective, in my previous experience creating a full-day program for a district, that is a district with a high-low socioeconomic status of families, a high diversity of first languages, over 65 languages as the primary languages in that district, a high EL bilingual population. So at that time, it was a service that we felt would help close the achievement gap for the students in that district and students in surrounding districts. So we had more of an at-risk learning population than we do here in District 25 in general. From my perspective, here in Arlington Heights, the reason for why full-day kindergarten is as a service to a community that's asking for it, families that are asking for it. We know, again, I do, I completely believe 100% to my core that having our students be with their teachers more is beneficial. And while I, I know that the, we wouldn't see the academic impact far into their future, right? We already have a robust half-day kindergarten. We already know that our current half-day kindergartners, our teachers in the past have told us, seem more prepared and ready for first grade than other kindergartners who come from full-day programs outside of the district, right? They've been here, they've been used to the way that we do things. But I believe there are positive social-emotional learning impacts to full-day kindergarten and opportunity for play-based interaction and learning with kids. I believe it's a great thing. It's not an academic impact, right? We already know that 75% of our eighth graders qualify for advanced or honors programs as freshmen. That's a very significant number. And I realize many of you on the board haven't been here when we've been able to share those reports. And our students from District 25 strongly qualify for those advanced learning programs as freshmen and continue in those programs through their senior year. So I don't think, right, full-day kindergarten has a major impact on that academic perspective. I do believe it has a major impact on the whole child and the development of children. And I believe it's a program that supports an interest of our families. I just want to, so that I think is important from my perspective, and like you said, Greg, it'd be interesting to hear, that's my why, right, from my experience as an educator. And I'd be very interested in, you know, what, what is it that is different for the board from 2017, again, we're a different board now, to now, that you have asked us to bring this topic back?
There's a, I know a lot of questions around the table, so, Mr. President, I'd just a couple more, a lot more, but it'll just take a couple more right now.
Yeah, I think, I think we can dispose of the Mr. President thing and just have a.
Okay, great. So disposed. In, in my unacademic research to prepare for this evening, there's a lot out there talking about the economic impact for a community when something like this happens, and this is even feedback I know I've heard from the community. We talk about parents that have to take a lesser participation in the workforce, have to make choices for their career. So is there any? So is there any information that you can offer along that line? So not, we're always focused on the child, but, and you're alluding to it in what you just said, that there's an impact on the family, but is there any more you can offer in that respect?
No, not at this moment, but that'd be something I could, we could definitely look, you know, more into. Again, related to that, in 2017, was the interest of our families that, if we were to have full-day kindergarten, that families that could not afford it on a tuition base somehow be covered. At that time, the, the information that we shared was a recommendation that if it was tuition-based, that families who could afford it, pay a little more, I kind of think we were at a five thousand dollar range, and that that would cover the cost for those who couldn't pay it. So we definitely have to, if a tuition base is the way we'd go, we definitely have to look at a variety of options to support families who couldn't. And at the same time, we can look at, you know, what other economic impacts are there on families who, right now, have to do half-day? What does that do for their ability to work, or?
I'll pass the mic to someone else. Just want to finish with saying that, I started asking you about the why, and from my perspective, it's really important that we lead with our why when communicating with our constituents, because to just walk in and say, do you want a tax hike, do you want a kindergarten, but without giving them the why that we've gleaned from all our constituents and everyone as a stakeholder, then I, I think that's, it'll fall flat.
Yeah, Greg, I think you got some great comments, and Lori, thank you for those comments as well. Maybe there's one other one that, just to add to it, we've talked many times about being a destination district, and I think that, at this point, once the kindergarten program goes live in fifteen, I believe, or twenty-one, I can't remember, up on Rand Road there, the new one that's going in, we'll be the only district in the area that doesn't have full, that doesn't offer full-day kindergarten, I believe, you know, when looking at it. So that's something to consider in that respect, where we've, we've tried to maintain, you know, some level of, now, I don't want to say parity, but some level of just equal services or even exceeding services to those particular areas. So, good thoughts there. You know, one of the option, if no one has any other comments, I want to dive into some of the details here that I know, you know, I know, exactly, but, so, one of the comments, or one of the options that I know we suggested or wanted to look at was an option of net neutral, meaning, you know, in all these, it's add, it's add, it's add. Why is there no option that says, stay where we are size-wise, we can still make this work?
So, good question. So if we were to look at a cost-neutral, right, we have to look at two different things. The annual operating costs, so the list that Stacy shared, right, we would double-staff, other things like that. And so that could be an option, that then we bring to the board and say, okay, we've looked at this, we've looked at the cost-neutral from an operational perspective, come back to the board and say, that will cost, whatever, one-point-two, one-point-six million each year? Where would the board, what other services or programs, or would the board like to cut, right, to offset that cost, too? Because you can't double kindergarten program without doubling staff, right? It's impossible. So that is an option, if the board wants us to come back with more information, we could bring you a, a closer estimate on an annual operating cost, and bring you comparative costs of programs, or, you know, different ways to offset that by cutting those from our budget, right? So that is one thing we could do. The other thing is, if we're going to go to full-day kindergarten, is the space facility issue. And some of the board members may remember, in 2017, we talked about, here's our first barrier, it's the space, right? Some districts are able to add full-day kindergarten because they have empty spaces. And in fact, when they then charge tuition for it, it becomes a revenue-producing program. We don't have much space. We have some things we could definitely look at combining. In 2014, for anybody that was here, one of the things I remember is my first meeting as superintendent in August, second meeting, where we had a large audience show up unexpectedly, and that audience showed up because they were angry, they'd been at a school event, and they came and said, our school is way too crowded. We can't believe that we were just here, and we didn't have enough space, and the classrooms were subdivided, and it really surprised all of us, and that kicked off our exploration into the space in our buildings, and eventually into the five additions that we did. So we can, like, Ryan had the one idea, what if we used the spaces that we think we could find in our schools? It would displace some of our smaller programs, and we'd have to find places for those, but we could utilize that, and, and have some of the rooms for full-day kindergarten. But otherwise, if we wanted to make the space, the facilities part, cost-neutral, again, we'd have to come to the board and talk about how to free up more spaces, such as dramatically increasing class sizes, taking some of our programs and, you know, I don't even like to say these, but in reality, taking some of our programs, moving them in the hallway, or we would already be looking to combine maybe a couple of special education, smaller programs in a room, or things like that. So to get to a cost-neutral place from a facilities perspective, honestly seems very difficult and unlikely, but something that if you want us to come back with that, we can show you what that would mean.
Yeah, Lori, I would like to, to kind of just go through those numbers a little bit, because I think there may be an opportunity or something of that nature, and, you know, one of the things that we've looked at is, you know, the, you know, the classrooms, number of classrooms. So just, it's not in here, but, you know, what is, how many classrooms are we utilizing today as classrooms? Classroom, so based on our staff, based on our enrollment, how many have been utilized?
Yeah, I'll get that chart updated, for sure. I can, I don't have that number off the top of my head, but it's, again, a chart that we put together here, we can get it over to you easily.
Okay, how many classrooms do we have? So, how many classrooms?
We can give you an example of that. So in the slide that Ryan shows, that if we just used our current classrooms, right, if we tried to only use the current classrooms, if I can find it, that we would have, and then just build on where needed, we would quickly go to a hundred percent capacity. But we can bring you at a future meeting, what is our current, what, every room in our district, how is it used, where is it used? I can tell you that the only, and you know that, over the years, Rich, we've been somewhere between a ninety-five and a hundred percent capacity at each building. The only building that's significantly different right now is Ivy Hill, because we've had such a change in, thank you, let me just go back to the beginning or something, in enrollment. I think we have, like, four large-size spaces, three or four large-size spaces at Ivy Hill right now, that are used for smaller activities that we might be able to combine.
Okay.
We, we have approximately two-hundred-and-one classrooms across the elementary schools.
Correct.
I can go, Dryden, twenty-four, Greenberg.
No, no, I just want to state large numbers at this point. So, so I'm looking off of a study that you produced back in September of nineteen, this study. And you followed up with it last year as well, in 2020, basically says the same type of thing, but back in nineteen, when our, our capacity, I'm sorry, our enrollment level at the elementary-level schools was three-thousand-seven-hundred-and-fifty-five students, we were utilizing a hundred-and-eighty-three classrooms, again, right off the study that's in there. So that leaves us, just, you know, quick math there, the difference between two-hundred-and-one and one-eighty-three is, you know, what, seventeen and a half, seventeen thereabout. So I'm, I'm just kind of thinking of that. Now, now, our enrollment, based on the numbers that we'll see later, is three-thousand-four-hundred-and-sixty-six students. So we've dropped, which would then, in general, you would surmise that we've dropped in the number of classrooms that are needed, right? So we, just, just quick math, right, and that's consistent year-to-year, we should be utilizing about a hundred-and-seventy-three classrooms. So I guess the first question, when we say we don't have facilities, now, back in this, you know, period, you mentioned that thirteen classrooms were being utilized for something other than classrooms, that, that, we've already excluded art, gym, music, and all the specials. So if we've already down a hundred-and-seventy-three, down to a hundred-and-seventy-three from twenty-one, minus the thirteen, we should have enough classrooms, there should be more than fifteen classrooms available.
So for other use, but those are, it can be things like a resource classroom, an EL resource program, right? They're not full, your instructional classroom, right? Therefore, where our resource kids would go for special education, or for EL services. So related to what Rich is saying, for sure, if the board wants us to go, if one of the things the board wants us to further investigate, is exactly how many classrooms do we really have, or where could we move some things? That is definitely one of the things that we can research. I don't have all the numbers in, in my head right now, but I can tell you, we feel it's very unlikely that we could fully fit full-day kindergarten in our current facilities without significantly impacting some of those other groups. When we built over the last, when we built during that four-year period, we added classrooms to the district to meet the growing enrollment. We did not add extras. The goal at the time was to meet the growing enrollment with maybe one extra classroom at each building, so we had a little bit of leeway. We definitely can go back and bring to the board exactly what is every classroom used for right now. We tried to project that from a kindergarten perspective in these slides that we showed you earlier, and what we believe we would need, what classrooms were available at each building. But we can definitely bring you an update on every space that's being used, so you can see that.
You know, and Lori, I think that, that would be helpful, because we're talking about an investment of a lot of dollars, potentially, and if we have twenty-eight classrooms that aren't being utilized for classrooms, right, what are they being utilized? Now, again, back in 2019, so two years ago, you were utilizing thirteen of them for what you just mentioned. And that was consistent with last year as well, the study that came out in November. So that would leave fifteen classrooms that are being used for either free or for something else. And if we need fourteen, it sounds like we're there from a classroom.
The disconnect here is the size of the room. Like, a classroom, we consider approximately over six-hundred square feet. A lot of these rooms are close to six-hundred square feet, so that's, that's the number we'll get you as well. So some of these rooms are a lot smaller, like, half the size of what a kindergarten classroom would is. We consider a classroom, because they're, it's big, I mean, we can get, a considerable amount of kids in a six-hundred-square-foot classroom, but we couldn't get a kindergarten classroom in there. So again...
I don't disagree. So then it becomes an, an allocation of where do we prioritize space, right, for those, for the rooms? But if we have just the number of classrooms, it seems logical that they're being utilized for something other than what we might need them for here.
Yeah, I think, again, we can bring that, too. There's a disconnect in that, if we have a six-hundred-square-foot space and a twelve-hundred-square-foot space, we're not putting the resource necessarily in the twelve-hundred and leaving the six-hundred-foot open, right? But we can, again, that, that is, it's something the board, one of the things you want to ask us to do, is to bring you that more current charts of each school and all those classroom spaces, and what they're used for. We can definitely, that's one thing that we could do, moving forward.
Okay. The other part, I know Anisha want to get to, just let me get to the numbers, sorry. You talked about the, the Casar, the, whatever, the CAR, Casar study, yes. And we've been fortunate that we've been very, it's been matching the numbers in here pretty good. So I guess my first question is, why are we using the B series in this study?
So Casar gives us three series, A, B, and C. B is the most expected, what he expects based on the data that he reviews. A is, let me give you a version of if enrollment's much higher than I expect, and C is, let me give you a version if enrollment's much lower than what I expect, or it's the opposite, sorry. A and C are the opposite. But so B is, based on his data and the cohort program, that's what he expects the enrollment to be. We have always used B in our plannings for the future.
So not, again, not to be argumentative or anything of that nature, but we're actually using A. So if we go to our study here, this aligns with, the projections that are outlined here are A.
And if we've used A on some of that, it's because we have seen that a school has gone much higher than expected, like what we've seen at Ivy over the past six years.
So my, again, not to be, I'm just, I think we should be utilizing A. If we're utilizing B, right, and if that's what you're saying, we're under capacity in general, like massively, because of the...
You held up a chart.
Yeah, I'm sorry, this is off your deck, that you're about to show.
Can you tell me what page?
Six of seven.
Thank you.
So if you go to page six of seven, and it's been consistent since we published this in 2018, we're actually using series A in our study. Series B, if we actually are using series B right now, I mean, today, we would be short, that's, I'm sorry, I don't think so, we would be short in our staff seventeen classrooms. So, and that's just K through, K through five, I'm sorry, K through five. So we're short classrooms today. So I, I think that's one thing we need to kind of look at. Now, when we look at A and actually use A, it's not too off from B, it's very, it's flat, right, kindergarten first, or first grade, we're at four-hundred-and-sixty-nine compared to the, the study that you have, I'm sorry, four-hundred, five-hundred-and-eighty-four compared to the six-twenty-five, which reduces that from thirty-three to twenty-nine.
And again, the six-twenty-five, as just a reminder, we're looking at, if you look at the first grade enrollment, right?
I am, I'm sorry.
Opposed to the, okay, so opposed to the kindergarten.
Yep, yep, it's five-eighty-four.
So we can take a look at that, did we label it incorrectly, what did we do?
Again, it's, I just want to make sure that we're looking at those projections, because that has a significant impact to where we're going to be at. And I think, again, looking at an investment, I think we need to be looking at an option that says, okay, based on where we are, projection-wise, where, you know, how do we best utilize our resources? Because, again, being here, when we did the build-out, we added fifty-eight thousand square, yeah, fifty-eight thousand to our elementary schools, to meet projected capacities.
Right.
And if we're saying we're, we're not even, you know, just what, two years out from the construction, that we're at capacity, and that we can't even meet future capacity is, is scary a little bit.
Yeah, I would not say that we are at capacity, we are at exactly where we predicted, meeting that enrollment plus having a little bit of elbow room, right? But we, again, the other thing for Casar, we typically do that, projections every other year. The board will remember, we thought about doing it last year, but Dr. Casar said, really too much, many of variables. So that definitely will be a piece of whatever we do, and even if we don't do anything with kindergarten, this next winter will hopefully be a new Casar projection report.
So again, I'd ask that we really look at, is there an option in-house? Again, I think somewhere there's, it's reality, right? Meaning, it's a combination of all the moving pieces here, and that's the hard part of figuring what's the right moving piece. I just want to make sure we're starting at the right base to look at the right numbers and projecting from there, within that, so. But I agree, you know, maybe to Greg's comment, I should have left that, started, good, good analysis. I mean, it gives us a lot to talk about, everything, you know, the build-out costs are what really are scary, when you think about it, a million, you know, one-point-two for a classroom, you know, roughly, right? That's a significant investment for a thousand, you know, nine-hundred, a thousand square feet, that's, that's a huge investment, but a good one, because the benefit that, that it weighs in the long run, so. Anisha, you had some questions?
No, I just want to say thanks to the district team, the, the analysis that you put together and all the information, that was really helpful. And I want to say, as the operational experts on the ground, and having gone through this huge analysis, and looking at all the options, and with your expert, experience and expertise, Dr. Vine, and in, and I know that every time you as a team work, you're always kind of speaking to other colleagues in other districts, and I know Barrington has a fee-based program, I believe, and District Twenty-One, it has a different, you know, they've come up with a different kind of setup. What, what do you think would be the best option? I know there's a lot of variables and answers that you need, but what would be, based on everything, what do you think would be the best option?
Your opinion? Again, I think, I think it's important for us to start with input again from our community, including taxpayers, right? The last thing we want to do is get far down the road and then find out it can't be paid for, right? Or that it's, you know, there's, what, seventy thousand people who vote in Arlington Heights as opposed to thirty-five-hundred families that are in Arlington Heights? So I think it's important, it's an impact on our entire community. So I think it's important to get updated information. I want to do full-day I want to do full-day kindergarten the right way. I think it's the right thing to do for kids. And I don't want to put the district in a situation that we experienced in 2014, where families came and said, very angry, and said, we were just at an event at our school, and we are angry that how we've taken rooms and we've subdivided them, we've made small spaces, and it started raining at our school event, and as families, we had to all crowd into a space, and this is. So you don't want to put us back in that same situation. You know, I would do it the right way, and I would, I would phase towards that, right? It doesn't mean we have to wait till 24, 25 to start it all at once, right? You can do some things where if we have five available classrooms in the district, you can do a lottery, and families can enter a lottery if they want to go to full-day kindergarten. Another option, again, I believe, and what we would see from a survey, but I believe families would say, again, I'd like it at my homeschool, right? They might say, if I can't have it at my homeschool, then I still want it in a kindergarten center. And if that was so, we could do something where we have a full-day kindergarten center, or we have half-day at your homeschool, right? There can be choices like that. What we know when districts have, offer full-day kindergarten is that between 92 and 99% of families choose that full-day kindergarten. Between 1 and 8% choose to stay half-day. And just to say it out loud, because I know we've heard some questions from it, when you offer full-day kindergarten in Illinois, you must offer half-day, right? Now, half-day can be different. Half-day might be, this child comes in the morning in a full-day class, but they leave at lunchtime, right? It doesn't mean you have to have a half-day separate classroom. But by law, if we have full day, we must have a half-day option for families. So, you know, I would always, we have, this is an amazing district. You volunteer to serve it because you believe in it. I'm here because I love it, and I love the impact we have on kids and families. I would want to do the best that we can that would far be sustainable beyond any of us serving the district in the roles that we're in now.
Thanks, Dr. Bynum. Creative solutions. I have a clarifying question. If there was a fee-based program, would it still require a tax increase?
The fee-based program would cover the annual operating costs. The piece that we still need to figure out is the space and facilities piece. But otherwise, you, we would, if you did a fee-based program, you charge whatever your annual operating costs are. So there's no tax increase on that side of things. There could be on a facilities side of things. Stacy, am I missing pieces there? And again, that, from a, we would need to determine, does that fee-based, what about families who can't afford that fee-based? How do you make up for that amount?
So I have a unpopular topic that keeps bouncing around my brain, and we talked about it a little bit in 2017. It's noticeably absent, and I think it's rightfully absent, but I just want to throw it out there. So we've looked at a couple of different, just very high-level ballpark scenarios. Two or three of them have us building or retrofitting facilities. I guess the 800-pound elephant in the corner would be building a new school, redistricting, and accommodating, you know, this whole thing that way, you know? If we're going to, arguably, we just looked at one scenario that has us building a kindergarten center that's the size of a grade school. So right away, the thought would be, build a grade school, pull, you know, we'd have to redistrict. It'd be a painful, painful process. But I think it's one that, right, I think it's one that needs to potentially be in the mix of future considerations if we're going to build. So given all those caveats, I just want to make sure that that's something that everybody's got kind of on their radar.
Yeah, thank you. That's not even something that, you're right, I had thought about. That is an option. You build another elementary school. Or what some districts will do is you take fifth grade and add it on to your middle schools. And you, right, open up those classrooms at the elementary spaces. So reorganizing the grade levels at attend buildings or building an additional school and redistricting somehow also opens classroom spaces at current homeschools.
Yeah, I think that might be an idea worth exploring to some, to some degree. I guess my reservation in having a centralized kindergarten area is that you will take 14 classrooms out, 14 usable classrooms out of use, right, and centralize it. And so your cost is actually double, right? Not only the cost of a new building, but now you have a dead cost because you have an asset that's not being utilized because it's empty, right? If class, kids are in classrooms, that's an asset that's being utilized. So, you know, having something centralized, like, that would be something to, you know, just be wondering. Maybe there is an option, and again, just thinking out loud, is, well, Lori, you just suggested that fifth, two, Thomas and South. Because then, rather than building onto every building, every five building, or even building a new building, you're focusing your build efforts into two buildings, you're lowering architectural costs, structural costs, you know, just overhead costs on that. That might be an option to explore. If, you know, again, going back to my original discussion, there may be room in here. If there's absolutely nothing in here, maybe that's more palatable to some degree. Because we don't add new principals, we don't, you know, there's centralization of staff that's already there to handle those types of things. So that might be one, one thing to kind of consider there. I also wanted to bring to the board, just to think about that, and, you know, I was thinking, looking at this, the 21 and a half FTE. Can you, you know, maybe Stacy or Lori, just, you know, I know we have 14, and you, you know, projections, whether you need 29, 28, so that you add in 14 more teachers just for that effect. But what would the additional seven be then for?
So the, we have 14 classrooms, we have 12.5 FTE currently. If you go to, that's because one teacher can teach two sections. If we needed, with the Casar projection, the chart showed we needed 33 sections, which is 33 teachers, because you're not splitting anymore. So if you need 33 and you have 12.5 FTE, you need 21 and a half more FTE.
So if we add a different base model, just numbers, but you're, I think over a couple of years, we've had the experience where, this may not be a net add to, but over the past year, we have the highest. And when a teacher from our, if you hire people, you get a high salary, but for the most part, there's always exceptions. I just, a little over base, if there's less candidates, it's really, so remaining, or is the opportunity where over the last, oh, sorry.
That over the last years, we've gained some budget, right? Because you take the high salary, you take the low salary, you, you know, you have, let's say, you know, if we're just numbers, 100,000 is someone who's retiring, that you bring them in at 55, you're gaining 45 on each hire. Over the years, we've gained some buffer, whatever we want to call that. So maybe this isn't net new. It's really offsetting where, where you are or where you have been already. So that's something to consider.
And that's true, although when we negotiate our teachers' contract, the retirements that are planned ahead, and we know about those, are built into that negotiations, that savings is built in. That's how we afford to give our teachers the salary increases that we give them. We base it on CPI, and then we figure in the factors for those differentials to fund any additional increase above CPI.
So I'd love to see and understand what some of our surrounding districts and competition, what, what do they offer? So where are we losing that delta between our kindergarten enrollment and our first grade enrollment? And is it largely more private or public? And then what do the public school offerings, if we are now going to be the only district in the area that does not have this offering, what do the other ones have? Do they have that kindergarten center? Or is it in the homeschool, or is it some hybrid, depending on what it is? And is it at a cost, or is it offered as a public school, not in the private sector, but in the public school? Like, is it at the same cost of books and tuition type that you experienced when we hit the first grade level? So I'd like to see more information in that space. And then what the private sector, what their costs are, just to ensure that if we're going to go out and we're going to survey our community, right, we want to make sure we give them all of the information to get, so that they can give us the best possible feedback on what they're looking at. The other thing, and I'm going to go off of something that, that Rich had started on, is it's kind of a puzzle, right? So we have all of our schools, and we have classrooms within those schools that we're utilizing today. But what are the statistics on the size? Are we utilizing a classroom that could be repurposed for a kindergarten classroom? And we have a smaller classroom, that 600-size classroom, that's open, whereas, okay, well, now I would have to move things around. So second grade's going to move from room A to room B because I can utilize the second grade classroom because it's the right size to put a kindergarten in. So there's a little bit of a puzzle that I think we could unpack at a little bit more detail to truly understand some of the effort that you put into some of the costs.
For sure. You can always look at restacking the building, but then you always get into the point where you want to have grade levels next to each other for continuity in a building. That's where it comes into play, a part of the puzzle. Like, we could look at restacking, we may get a room here or there. Yeah, we definitely would need to look at that more in detail.
Correct. And, and again, there, there becomes another question we ask our community, right? Is there a benefit to the continuity of having the classrooms together? And, and we ask the teachers too, right? The teachers have to have, have a view on this as well. So I think, I think we need to do a little bit more research on our own before we can be prepared to go out and ask the community for their input and their feedback. But I think we're definitely going down the, the right track and the right path. And I don't know that the community has changed their position on at least the desire to have the conversation and provide that input. I just would like to make sure that we give them, and that we've dotted all of our i's and crossed all of our t's before we go out and we, and we prep some kind of a survey. The other thing that I have a question on is the gap being equalized by third grade. Help me better understand that. Is that a result of the fact that first-grade curriculum is first-grade curriculum, and it's kind of sted? Because if they're now in for kindergarten on full day, is there an alternative track that potentially keeps those kids ahead, and we have to catch other kids up, so to speak, that didn't have the benefit of that full-day kindergarten? Have we created this equalization or this kind of curve that instead of taking the achievement gap and the trajectory that comes out of full-day kindergarten and maximizing it throughout the balance of the student's career, have we actually kind of lowered that curve, so to speak?
Yeah, so we can bring that research to you, but no. What the research shows is, for students who are at risk, like second language learners, like low income, like students with disabilities, having them in full-day kindergarten does close the achievement gap between them and their typical peers. For your typical learners, for a couple of reasons, it levels off, and you don't see the difference by, any achievement difference by third grade is because, one, going half-day kindergarten to full-day kindergarten doesn't mean you're doubling all that kids learn, right? You've got to increase lunch, you've got to increase some other pieces to that. And two is what we know about child development and how much, how much we can soak in as learners, right? So being in school longer doesn't necessarily that you mean, you can double your learning or double your trajectory because we have the whole development piece as a part of that as well. Again, we do have those research studies that we had when we prepared this in 2017, and we can share that with the board when we move forward.
So then, off of camping onto that, Dr. Bynum, if we're looking at that, is there any opportunity potentially then to keep some of our kids in their homeschool with interventions earlier on so that maybe they work, like, level-two interventions? So that maybe they, they work and they get back into court classroom at a faster rate because we've caught them even earlier now because we're full-day kindergarten?
Good question. It, I think what I hear you asking is, could, yeah, either through full-day kindergarten or if you have half-day, could you keep children who need interventions longer, like we do for those who are at risk that we have full-day kindergarten for, right? Could we do an extended kindergarten for students based on their academic achievement in kindergarten? By just having more at-risk full-day kindergarten? That is definitely something we could look at. Our kindergartners do get interventions, correct, Peg? So we do identify kindergartners who are below the 25th percentile in achievement in reading and math, and they do get reading and math intervention. If we provided extended kindergarten just for those students, we might be able to add some additional time for them.
And then would that potentially help us put them on the trajectory to reintegrate? Especially for, depending on which level of intervention they receive?
And I, yeah, I think what you would, it may be that they can reintegrate earlier. I think what, what we can show you with our data is that students who do start here in kindergarten and continue here, that we are closing that gap for those students in those tier-two groups. When they are consistent, you know, districts that have students that have a high mobility rate struggle with that. But we have a pretty, what, solid rate of students staying here. And so by how we are identifying in them and servicing them now, we can show you how those move back into the tier-one groups. Especially with our EL students, we have a high number of students in that program through their EL interventions that return to their, full-time to their typical classrooms and no longer need those services. But with what you're saying, might we be able to do that earlier if we had more time with them for kindergartners? It's possible.
Dr. Bynum, I have a couple, just a couple of technical questions and then a process question. And actually, this, kind of, I'm glad, Brian, you brought that up about a new school elementary. Or, Dr. Bynum, you mentioned maybe five, the fifth grade moving over. I'll throw another one in there, maybe a five, six, seven, eight. But the technical question is, when considering like a, a central place, whether it's two or one central kindergarten facility, all of a piece here, considering travel time to those places? And, and you mentioned this, Ryan, a little bit with Dunton, the traffic impact wherever it goes. Maybe those are just questions I'll put out there, but if there's any comment on it.
Yeah, so full-day kindergarten at a homeschool probably causes us to have a lower transportation cost because we're cutting out that middle-day bus that we currently have. And we already have them on our morning and our afternoon routes. Having a center increases our transportation costs as well as the time that it takes to bus students to those facilities.
Right. But, yeah, even meaning like, how early would a kindergarten student have to be on a bus if they are at the far end of where, you know, from wherever the center is, is my concern? Because how early does that child have to be ready to be on the bus?
Yeah, which is, you know, again, a piece of the puzzle, as well as why, you know, I think one of the things Ryan said is, if you do a kindergarten center, maybe you do a north-side one and a south-side one, maybe of two, or, you know? So that, again, everything has its pros and cons and, and things we'd have to detail once we know which direction the board would like us to focus.
I would just add, if you did a kindergarten center, it's highly probable that the majority of your kindergartners are going to live more than a mile and a half from their school, which means you're going to bus probably 90% of them, which would add at least, I mean, figure however many sections of kindergarten you have. If a bus can sit 52 kids, that's one bus for every two sections of.
If a bus can sit fifty-two kids, that's one bus for every two sections of kindergarten, other than those located directly within a mile and a half of wherever a kindergarten center would be.
Yeah, I'm wondering if it may give guidance to the staff, do we say, you know, what's our interest level in doing further explanation on a consolidated kindergarten center, right? You know, we've talked about adding something new, but a consolidated kindergarten center, do we want to take that one off the table right now or continue exploring that particular piece based on what we're just hearing, even in transportation costs, things of that nature?
Or is it, if it's easier, is there a priority, right? Is priority number one come back to us with what exactly is available in the district? Priority two being, you know, adding on to schools? Priority three, a kindergarten center? Or do you have an order of priority in your mind?
I mean, me personally, I think that the, I think that the kindergarten center is the least attractive option, in my opinion. Cost prohibitive, disruption to the community school, I mean, there's just, there's just a couple of things. I don't know if that helps you, but.
So would then?
I don't know if everybody else agrees to.
Well, would then, and just throwing this out there, based on that type of priority, is our first priority, maybe in line with what you just said, Lori, is see what we can do, current assets, meaning, and I'd even say not rand or minor, but current, you know, five schools that we have. And then maybe option two is current seven schools, right? Meaning Thomas, you now throw in.
We have seven elementary.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
So current elementary schools.
Yeah, yeah, current elementary schools. And then current all schools, right, that are, currently house our students, so excluding rand, minor, unless, then I would think we start looking at adding on at the lowest cost process. And then at that point, and that's almost a, you know, kind of a thing to say, I don't know, because then, then it brings, maybe, do you bring up, add another school, right? And that would then bring in minor, rand, and something new into play because then it's an add-on to the existing nine.
So you're, are you suggesting that at the second level, I believe you said, where we look at all our schools, that's where we would talk about either a fifth grade moving over? Is that what you're suggesting?
Yeah, something, yep, yep, yep. Maybe, you know, like even you suggested a five, six, you know, seven, eight, or whatever. But, yeah, I think Stacy brings up a good point is that, you know, it's the, it's the transportation cost and then the disruption to the community as well. I mean, if we do, you know, what is the least disruptive within that priority set there as well that keeps what has made the district strong is, you know, a lot of, you know, you got the homeschools, things of that nature, they go to, you know, there's that spirit that leads them through the, you know, their entire two-fourteen type of process. That might be one, and I'm just throwing that out, not to say that, but I'm just thinking as we're talking, is that something that's palatable to everyone else to say? That might be a, a priority for the staff to go to next step within some time period. And then at some point, I think, based on that information, we would need to go to the community. Now we have some more information really to go to the community, get their, their input into that process. Because now we have some, we can then maybe narrow it down a little bit more, you know, unless we go get input, I'm jumping ahead, sorry here. So if we like that priority, at some point, do we say, do we go get input from the community based on just general information, you know, massage or understand that? And then, once we narrow that down even further, go out again to say, okay, now we have these two, two options that, based on your input, based on the analysis, and we have something there.
Sorry. Yeah, I was going to say, Rich, before we even go down the path of prioritization, A, B, C, or D of the options, I really think we should get what Gina said, but what's the basic information cost that it could cost to put on a parent to say, okay, I want to send full-day kindergarten? It's five thousand dollars if there's a payment, right? If there's this. And then from there, I think it's really those questions as, is it a home? Is it a, do you prefer a homeschool? Are you willing to go to a centralized, like, a center? Or the option of maybe, do you build a, I mean, I'm using the example of fifth and sixth-grade building because I'm not necessarily, you want to throw all the fifth graders in with sixth graders, but if you're going to build or add on, do you just say, you know, it says, you know, we had one option of South could have an additional building, so to speak, could you put a fifth, sixth grader and then find a fifth, sixth close to Thomas, right? So to speak. So that way, you're not making the extra cost necessarily because some of those kids will have to be bused anyways from a Thomas. Fifth grade would be the extra cost and not everybody at your full kindergarten being caught. So I think if you get those types of things together, instead of saying, let's prioritize that, I think it's really just, what's the cost it going to be? Are you interested in doing a pay method, right? Because I think a lot of parents are going to struggle if we say it's five thousand dollars. I mean, I'm just using the difference, right? Because they're going to sit there and say, okay, so what's the difference? And on top of that, we have to incur costs to build these buildings and the taxpayers are going to be impacted that way because, like it or not, someone's going to have to pay for the buildings. And then, yes, we're only paying for the ongoing operational cost, but you really don't have the building cost paid for still. I still feel like we're asking a lot of questions, but if the taxpayers don't want to build two new buildings or add on all these additional things, I think that's really the key that we have to understand. Well, it sounds really good to say we want to add on all these, you know, I struggle with the fact that it's a five thousand dollars, I'm just using that as a number, right? And then we're going to take, but on top of that, yes, it's a pay model, but then we have to add all these buildings. And guess what? Who's going to float that bill? And that's where I, I'm struggling with what Lori says, where we say by third grade, it averages out. I mean, the data, maybe data's going to change if we do some more research, but I'm still struggling with the volume and the cost and the dollars. And I understand every other district around us is doing this, but I don't know how they funded it. I don't know what their balance, what their budget was compared to our current budget because I know from our last budget meeting, it sounds like we're doing okay, but we're going to go under the, what we like to keep as our normal balance and the other things of that nature. So I just, I think before we even go any down that route, I feel like we really should just do some basic, high-level, hey, survey, and then from there, come back, based on that results and to your point, go back to them and say, all right, sixty percent of the parents of the district want to go with a new one, but if seventy percent of the Arlington Heights taxpayers say no, well, then that's a conversation we're going to have to have around that. Because I think, to your point, when you ask the parents, right, all parents want kindergarten, right? But the person living next to them may say, I don't want to pay that on my tax bill. So I just think we need to have that, that conversation.
You know, I, I want to go back to, I agree with what Chad is saying, but I also want to go back to something that Greg had brought up earlier because any organizational change effort, garnering that community support, providing them all the information upfront, but also it's going to take some advocacy in giving them the right information. Because of course, when you say there's this tax dollar, this amount, that if, if you're not giving them all the information and all the benefits and the why, and why it's beneficial, because not everybody is going to think on that big lens, then you'll lose support. You'll straight away be like, I know even in our household, they'll be like, oh, my gosh, no, we don't want taxes to go up. But if you look at the whole, so it's any organizational change effort, it's going to require ownership, advocacy, support, and communication, and really getting everybody's input and educating everybody what the benefit and what the why is for our district and our mission and our vision. And also this piece that you brought up about, now knowing that our strategic plan is also equity-focused and what the socioeconomic levels in Arlington Heights being changed and meeting that equity piece. So I think it's a larger, I think we just throw a survey at without providing all the information and the whys, then, then it falls really quickly because nobody, I don't, I know, wants taxes to go up in Arlington Heights. You know, we already pay very high taxes. So it, it's going to need a lot of front-loading.
So we can put together, just some of the things I'm hearing, we can put together a survey that has, you know, the why, that has what projected cost might be to taxpayers by working with some of our consultants to create some of that information. And we can bring it back to the board and say, does this give enough information for our community to give us some input? And the other thing I'm hearing is we can come back to you, you know, we can come back to you with what a survey would look like, you know, how much information is in it, et cetera. And then if the board's good with that, we can put that out there and then take next steps. Or is the board wanting us to do the other thought that I heard with come back to you? If we used only our current buildings and we drilled down into exactly what we have and exactly what we could fit, what would that mean? And then a second level being if we used all nine buildings without adding on or doing anything, what could we fit and what would that mean? So we can, do you want, I guess what I'm asking is do you want the survey first or do you want the other parts first?
I almost think you need to do what you just mentioned, those two things, because right now, the only cost that you have or that's been presented is the build, you know, new facility buildings, that nature versus what if we, what is the impact of utilizing our assets that we have? What does that look like? And then you have some, some basis to say, you know, it's, it's this cost versus that cost and, you know, there's, there's an understanding in that at that point.
Yeah, I think, I'm sorry, that, I, I agree with Chad that we need that community input before we, if I'm paraphrasing correctly, that we need, we need that before we go too far down the road. My concern, to echo some of these other comments, is that we would not have refined our proposal enough to give a degree. Degree is crucial. If I ask you if you want your taxes to go up, what are you going to say?
Nope.
But if I tell you, and I'm going to make up a ridiculous number, it's going to cost you five dollars a month across the community. Well, that sounds a lot different, doesn't it? And, and I'm not minimizing whether or not someone could afford that, but I'm just saying degree is crucial and we, you know, refining our vision, not to the nth degree, but is important. And I also, I think, and maybe we could just come around and, and agree or have consensus on it, but I think the more we talk, the, that, that central place for kindergarten is, is, there's not a lot of interest at this table. Is that, I mean, can we say that out loud and have consensus there?
Three people say they wouldn't. No, four?
Not the way.
Yeah, I, I think home, some way keeping it close into the, into the neighborhoods is the ideal solution. However, we figure that out, if you're, you know, if we're going to go down that path. Because one, I, oh, microphone, sorry. I, I just think it's better for the community. I think it's better for people, right? I think about, you know, my kids walking them to this kindergarten as opposed to hopping in the car. It was a family event, everybody walking down, you know, I think it's an important part of that experience and I think it's important that, you know, people are going to want to continue that, right? And then suddenly say, well, actually, I got to take, you know, if we would implement something like that, two years ago, I took my second grader there, but now I got to jump in the car and I got to worry about getting my second grader. I think about all of that too, right? I have a second grader in a kindergarten, I got to worry about my second grader walking to school and making sure they're off and running. And then I got to run my kindergartner to a centralized location or I got to bring him to a bus stop or whatever the situation is. I think a home-based model is the most sense, like, in that, in that community.
Stacy, did you have a?
Yeah, I guess one of the factors, at least personally, I think would be helpful for some of us. One of the factors that plays a role in classrooms being available is class size, which is not something we've touched at all. I guess it'd be helpful to know from the board, is, are you willing to look at flexibility in terms of adjusting some class size numbers to try to make this cost-neutral or try to make this a less expensive program?
So I'm going to jump in on that one really quick. I think that that's, under the current circumstances of the, of the global pandemic, I think that's a, a more difficult thing. We would have to better understand, like, what flexibility without increasing quarantine because obviously keeping the kiddos in the school is, is our number one priority. So we're, we're years out to be able to implement this.
Outside of the pandemic, right? This, in our district, as long as most of us can remember, a low class size has been a priority and something very special. So, so I think what Stacy's asking is pandemic, if the pandemic's long gone, does the, how does the board feel about the possibility of freeing up some classroom spaces by having a larger class size?
So I think that could be another question we could ask the community as well before we have that discussion. But what I will offer, and I'm going to support Anisha on this one, is that I think that we have a lot more of the advocacy and the communication and the research to do and build to, before we go out with a survey at this point.
I'll make a last point. Even when we get to that point, when we have all the information, that this, this is a big step for our community and that there is some, you know, survey fatigue is real, right? And for our community, you know, you know, it's been a lot as far as not having all the information, even they're not fully informed. So even when they have all the information, I think it'd be interesting or an idea I'll throw out is to have a town hall where all these options are discussed verbally, shared, answer question, you know, a town hall with, with the, with the administration and then say, okay, then we're following up with the survey. So everybody kind of has the information because sometimes that, that would help with the front-loading and having all the information. They need to be best informed to answer those survey questions.
And like leaving tying in with, you know, the other boards, the trustees, the, the library board, the park district board, because that's a conduit of information that can be shared there as well.
We're running up, up to seven o'clock. Dr. Biden, you have some, what the board is thinking here. Yeah, it's a good conversation on where to move forward, our next steps, as Slide thirty-seven says. Do we need a motion to adjourn or can we just?
No, you need to adjourn this meeting. And I'll just say before you do that, for anybody that's watching, you do have to go on to a new livestream link to join the seven-thirty meeting. It's not the same livestream link for both meetings, so do make sure that you look on the website for that new livestream link for the regular meetings. But otherwise, yeah, we'd need to adjourn this meeting.
So I get a motion to adjourn, anybody?
Mr. President.
Yes, Rich.
I move that we adjourn this community of the whole session.
Sounds good. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Rich. Thank you, Chad. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you.